Okay, we just need the monitor over here. All right, I will call to order the city council meeting, common council meeting for October 8th at 7:30 PM. First up is Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Alder Radifrata. Alder Barr is absent with excuse. Alder Clouter. Alder Krausey. Alder Rice.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Schroeder. Alder Scott. Alder Strassman. You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Then, the first thing on the agenda is public appearances for non-agenda items. And the first item under there is Resolution R. 164-19, A Public Hearing on the Mayor's Proposed 2020 Operating Budget. So, open the public hearing. I do not have any slips for anyone that wants to make a comment on the operating budget. I don't see anyone jumping up and waving their arms and wanting to speak on it. So, seeing nothing at this point, I will close the public hearing and move on to B. And B is a proclamation recognizing fire prevention week. All right. Whereas the city of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Pittsburgh. And whereas Pittsburgh is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States respond to 357,000 home fires. And whereas the majority of US fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year. And whereas when the smoke alarm sounds, Pittsburgh's residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety. And whereas Pittsburgh's residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Pittsburgh's residents should make a home escape plan, drawing a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows, at least two ways out of every room. And whereas Pittsburgh's residents should practice the home escape plan at least twice a year, during the day and at night, with everyone in the household, including visitors. And whereas Pittsburgh's residents should teach children to escape on their own, in case adults can't help them. And whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, Not Every Hero Wears a Cape, Plan and Practice Your Escape, effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Aaron Richardson, Mayor of Pittsburgh, do hereby proclaim October 6 through 12, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. I urge all the people of Pittsburgh to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways in the out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Pittsburgh's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2019. Proclaim this 8th day of October, 2019. And Chief, would you like to say a few things?
Yeah, thank you. Fire Prevention Week is a really good opportunity for us to really consider what a fire department is there for, not only to fight fires, but hopefully prevent them as well. October 9th was actually, it is the anniversary of the great Chicago Fire. And more, more locally, the great Peshtigo Fire. So, this does really mark a significant date in our history to, to stay on top of things that involve preventing fires and getting the community involved, the community involved in their own safety. Thank you so much for the proclamation. And if anybody ever has any questions about fire prevention or fire safety measures, please contact the fire department, we'd be happy to help you out. Oh, this weekend? Well, Pat was going to, to announce it, but on October 12th, Saturday, we are going to have our open house at Fire Station 1, that's on Lacy Road. And then, for those that were interested in Station 3 and its opening, we will hopefully have something available to the public in the very near future. We're working out some of the, the, the normal moving in bugs that happen and we're just trying to get on top of some of the things that involve occupying a brand-new station. Thanks again for the proclamation and hope to see you at the open house.
Thank you, thank you. And Pittsburgh is very fortunate to have such a great fire department. So, thank you and your staff for all the great service they provide us.
And I have a question for Joe.
Yes, ma'am.
Hopefully, people are aware that we had a fire up in District 1 in the last week or two. Most people are not aware that it impacted 10 different units in a building. I took a little bit of a looksee around. They've got sprinklers in the common hallways, but none in the units. I'm going to put Olivia, who, who is here, and I'm happy she's here, on notice that I want to talk to Wida about putting together a program to help home, or apartment owners retrofit apartment buildings with sprinklers. And I want to turn around the law that the state made prohibiting Pittsburgh from encouraging apartment buildings to be retrofitted with sprinklers. Can you give us a quick update on the status of the fire and the 10 families that were impacted?
Sure, as far as the, the families that were impacted, we, we tried to help them out initially to, to get them places to stay. We worked through the apartment management company, along with the Red Cross, in order to make that happen. We don't necessarily manage that after the fact, because of the fact that there's some very private things that happen that they don't necessarily want their fire department involved in. However, there were a number of people impacted. We try to stay on top of the, the sprinkler specifications, the standards associated with code enforcement. We, we are, we recognize the, the value in a, in a sprinkler system and, and appreciate those that, that do continue to maintain those life safety mechanisms in multi-residential occupancies.
Do you know when they rebuild that building now, whether insurance is going to be putting sprinklers throughout?
I think that depends on the, the code that's going to be followed at the time that it is rebuilt. And it will likely, if it has to be completely rebuilt, will be brought up to current standards.
I think they've got four of the units down to the studs, so there's at least four.
Yeah, so we have to do that in, in coordination with the state and our own code inspectors, our building inspectors.
Well, again, I encourage it.
Yep, thank you.
All right. We did have someone who came just a few minutes after we closed the public hearing on the operating budget. So, I did want to read the comment form anyway. I hope that's all right with everyone, even though I closed it. This is from Richard Roth in Pittsburgh, registering in opposition above the matter, and a comment, "The proposed budget fails to address critical staff needs within the fire department." So, I wanted to share that. And going on to mayoral appointments, we've got four people here for the Housing Committee, Housing Advisory Committee. I think we'll, we only have two seats, so maybe we have two people up, come up, just introduce themselves real quick. Michelle Mertens and Olivia Perry first. If you could just come up and just kind of introduce yourself and why you might be interested. It doesn't need to be very long, but welcome.
Thank you. Well, since my name is first on the list, I'll go first. I'm Michelle Mertens, and I am a retired affordable housing developer and developed 300 units out in King County in Washington State. I'm interested in being on this committee workshop because I'd like to build a stronger community, I'd like more diversity in our community, and would like to meet the needs of all residents in Pittsburgh.
Great.
Thanks for having me, thanks for the invitation. My name's Olivia Perry, and I'm a senior planner in the Dane County Planning and Development Department. As a senior planner, I manage the Dane County Housing Initiative, which is a public-private partnership that works to develop information, resources, research, and a network of stakeholders to expand housing options in Dane County. So, I, you know, feel like this is really part of the work that I do, and I do work with communities all over Dane County. So, I, it would be a pleasure to help you achieve your goals in whatever way I can.
Great, are there any questions for Tom?
In reference to the, I'm just reading the, what it is. It says Housing Advisory Committee, not only for people up here, myself, but maybe the public as well. What is this? And who are they reporting to? What's it about? What's this about?
This is a new committee that we authorized, and it's, falls under CETA, actually. And they'll be working on a variety of related issues with housing in Dane County. I know one of the first things that I've asked them to do is to look into getting Dane County Housing Authority to operate here in Pittsburgh, since we're the only city in Dane County that doesn't do that. And then, they'll look at some other things, including looking at our fee structure for housing. I know one of our, one of the plans, anyway, is to keep our TIS open an extra year because you can use that money towards affordable housing programs. And so, I know that they'll work to figure out what kinds of things make a lot of sense for, for those funds, what kinds of programs make sense. They're going to meet probably quarterly, is what we're thinking right now. And we're going to work on when that is.
That was my question, next question, how often do they meet? And?
The plan right now is quarterly. Oh, I have Dorothy in answer.
Okay. In the form of a question, can you tell us about the Housing Summit coming up?
Yeah, the Dane County Housing Summit is a program that's part of the initiative that I manage. And every year, we bring together stakeholders, elected officials, residents, developers, housing agencies, nonprofits, and, yeah, interested residents to come and learn about affordable housing and, yeah, and workforce housing and all the different ways that it happens. The obstacles this year were sold out again at Menona Terrace. We have 255 people coming. So, it's, and for the first time, the city, the executive actually usually inter, you know, the executive in the county board provide opening remarks, but the mayor is actually joining them for the first time. So, that's kind of an unusual thing. But this year, we, yeah, it's just our fifth annual Housing Summit. So, we're having kind of a, a bigger-than-usual Housing Summit. But it's, we're really, you know, this work is really beginning to take the, we've sort of, you know, built sort of a regional group of stakeholders. So, now, you know, we're starting to think about how it is that we can share more information and work together more cooperatively and learn from each other. So, I think that's really the theme. But health and housing, healthcare and housing is, are, is one of the tracks. Racial equity and inclusion, how can we grow our communities that are more, you know, racially equitable? And Affordable Housing 101 has the most people signed up, 80 people in that panel. And 70-something in the panel that you'll be speaking on, Mayor. So, those are our two most popular ones. People want to always know about what other communities are doing and then how to get started. And then, we have what we're calling a Housing Innovation Lab, where we're showcasing new technology and new policies and programs that are being launched or piloted, either in this area or around the state or the country. And then, rehab, preservation and rehab is a big area that we could all benefit from. It's sort of the low-hanging fruit when it comes to affordable housing. And, yeah, and we're going to profile some nonprofit developers at the summit, so.
Thanks, and my second was to point out, when the word affordable is used, it doesn't necessarily mean housing for poor people. It means everybody should have a house that they can afford to live in that doesn't cost more than a third of their income, certainly not more than half of their income, when many people live in housing that is much more than half of their income. So, how to make it affordable for everyone?
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you for the background on the Housing Committee. I was curious just that there are non-Fitchburg residents as a requirement, and that it was called out of the only three of the seven citizen members, Shelby residents. Was there a thought process behind that? Or it just seemed like an exception to kind of what I was accustomed to seeing? I didn't know if there was something behind it.
Yeah, so up to three people could be non-residents. There, at this point, there's only one or two, actually, that won't be Pittsburgh residents. And it's just ensuring that we have expertise in housing on that committee. And so, that's really just trying to make sure that that is something that we have a lot of experts on. And we're very fortunate to have a very strong group of people that are willing to help out for, for this committee. All right, thank you both. And we'll have Jennifer Clary and Godwin Amagashi up next. Can you just tell us a little bit about yourself? That'd be great.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Clary. I currently reside with my husband in Pittsburgh in District 2. And I currently am part of the Community and Economic Development Authority. So, I am hoping to bring that, and that's where I'm part of the Housing Committee. I currently service the Dane County area as a real estate agent as well as an appraiser for the past five years. And I'm really excited, actually, for these two people to join the Housing Committee because I'm very excited about their expertise and their knowledge of that. And bringing that in, yes, they may not be Pittsburgh residents, but that expertise will be pretty key in what we're hoping to do with the Housing Committee.
My name is Godwin Amagashi. I live on Richardson Street. So, when they, when the mayor called and I knew he was a Richardson, I figured I had to come out. So, that's one of the reasons I'm here. Having said that, my background is, for about 30 years, I was in the banking business, where I was a vice president of M&amp;I. And for eighteen and a half years, I was a director of supply diversity for the state of Wisconsin and worked in the state building program as the executive assistant. I served on the state's architectural and engineering selection committee for eighteen and a half years. I'm retired. I have a small consulting firm. One of the things that I'm excited about is that I sit on the county's CDBG Commission. And it's only lately that I noticed that those of us in Pittsburgh are looking for more and more economic opportunity. In terms of my education, I have a double major at the university, master of science in business. I'm also a fellow of the Economic Development Institute of the World Bank. So, I live in Pittsburgh, I've been in Pittsburgh for the last 15 years.
Any questions for these two people?
Amagashi lives in District 4.
All right. All right, then, thank you both as well. If someone would like to make a motion to approve these appointments, that'd be fantastic.
I'll move it.
Second by Julia. On favor of approving these four people, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, thank you all four of you for serving, I appreciate it. All right, I have Jay Hockmuth that wants to speak on something on the agenda. Actually, a couple of things here.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on two unrelated items under public participation. I appreciate this opportunity, and I think Pittsburgh should be commended for doing this routinely. I know sometimes people won't take advantage of it, but there's a couple of things I wanted to share tonight. And I provided copies of my remarks, which will be briefer than what I've handed out. My name is Jay Hockmuth, I've lived in Seminole Forest for 33 years. There's a six-acre glacial kettle in Seminole Glen Park that's truly a unique resource for the city. It's a rare gem left after the Ice Age. And it's 35 feet deep, and it's basically propagated or populated with a lot of mature hardwoods, including some heritage oaks. The surrounding neighborhood has a very deep commitment to this park. And in cooperation with the Parks Department, this spring, summer, and fall, volunteers have cleared five acres of invasive brush and planted over 200 oak trees and 500 native seedlings. And this voluntary effort would have cost the city approximately $75,000, but it basically came at only the, and I'm not sure who paid for the seedlings. But the watershed that surrounds this kettle is kind of unique. There's two ponds in the park. And typically, if we get a lot of rain, they will actually overflow into adjacent grassy areas, and the water will seep away. But some changes have been made to this watershed in the last couple of years, and there's been some very significant issues with what's occurred since those changes were made. Historically, there was, according to a very careful analysis, we, one of the residents of Seminole Forest really has taken a real interest in this. And there were three overflow events in 35 years, and in the past two years, there's been five. Now, I know there's been a lot of rainfall events, but there was also a lot of very unique rainfall events over the past 35 years. So, there's something going on there. And there's a lot of indications that some rehab is going to have to be done with the ponds, and some additional effort may be required to rehabilitate the damage that was done by the overflows occurring into the kettle the past couple of years. And there's a nonprofit that's been formed, let's see, I'm lost track here. A nonprofit has been formed that intends to work with the Parks Department and the Public Works Department to rehab this local watershed. And so, it meets all city, county, and state standards, and also rehabilitate the kettle so that it basically is kind of, to the best of the ability of people, to restore to its original condition before these overflow events occur. The key deliverable for the nonprofit will be a park management master plan created in partnership with the city. The ongoing irreversible devastation of the kettle's geology and ecosystem dictates that these remedial efforts cannot be postponed until a citywide, long-term study of the stormwater issues is completed. Therefore, please direct staff to immediately create a work group composed of area residents and engineering and park staff to expeditiously develop a short-term interim solution and a long-term sustainable solution to minimize kettle flooding. Thank you for considering these comments.
Now, do you know that our new Public Works Director, Mike, did come out in the last few days when we had that rain and was able to view it with all the, some of the issues? I can follow up with him and, and find out if, you know, that might be part of the plan, I'm not sure. But I know he had a chance to see that, which is great.
Yeah, we, we, some of the people that were in attendance in there have been very impressed with his interest in this. And there are some interim things that can be done. Those ponds are full right now, and if we get an inch of rain over the weekend, that's going to wind up in the kettle. So, hopefully, some good will come out of this, and we appreciate the support for taking care of it.
Yeah, all right.
And I had the opportunity to talk to Mike a little bit earlier today. We're working on getting a meeting scheduled with the gentleman that Jay referred to as well to kind of figure out how we can work together on this.
Great, all right, you had one other item you wanted to speak about?
Okay, the other item under this particular gen item relates to the comprehensive plan update timeline. In July, the council adopted a resolution setting forth that timeline. And then, in September, staff came forward with several presentations, one at a council meeting, one at a planning committee, commission meeting, and then another at a committee of the whole meeting. And there's a couple of issues that have surfaced, they all ultimately revolve around the timeline. And I have spent a lot of time on this, trying to provide some creative suggestions on how to approach it. I met with staff recently, and it was a very productive meeting. And there's basically, there's another agenda item that deals with one of these issues with respect to the Edgewood proposal. So, I'm not going to spend any time on that now, but I would like to spend time on two other timeline-related issues. One is, should the comp plan be updated, version of the comp plan be reframed? And essentially, reframing is condensing the 13 chapters and 170 or whatever pages down to four chapters and 50 to 60, 75, 70 pages. I think that's a viable process, provided certain conditions are satisfied. And those conditions are enumerated in a draft resolution that's attached to my testimony. I'm not going to go into all the details of this. But suffice to say, reframing, in many regards, makes sense, provided there's certain sideboards and conditions associated with the reframing. And so, I'm offering this draft resolution in regard to those conditions on reframing for further consideration at subsequent council and commission meetings. The other item related to the schedule is the schedule itself. I think the effort is commendable by staff and by elected officials to move this forward. And these, these upcoming five sessions with the public at various locations throughout the city in the next couple of weeks really makes good sense. There's also the online survey that's going to be, apparently, the deadline is the end of October. So, all this information will be very beneficial. But what I'm concerned about is that the schedule that's currently in R. 12219 is a little too vague. It doesn't have enough milestones. And so, what I'm offering, again, without going into a lot of detail, and this is something that staff should take a look at, and I'm more than happy to meet with staff again to talk about it. The, under normal conventions for delivering a project this complicated in a timely fashion and budget, there are more milestones than those that are currently delineated. And I have no problem with those being adopted and put into place in July. My issue now is whether there's enough detail, because I know there are legitimate criticisms of whether this schedule is achievable.
Could wrap up, Jay, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, refer to my resolution attached to these comments for further information on that, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and then, one last thing, Janelle, I know that you wanted to speak about something as well.
Yeah, so if I can loop back on this for just a moment. So, my understanding is that we've got a consideration for reframing this. Have we made a, a decision as a committee to do that? Or where is the current status of that? Just to make sure that staff kind of, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We can probably talk about that during the comp plan thing, actually.
Got it, okay.
But I know you had a, a non-agenda item that you wanted to speak on. Yeah, can we talk about more? I'll answer those questions during that piece.
So, my non-agenda item.
Just give me a second here.
And my PowerPoint. Can you hit the slideshow? Thank you. Up in the top, center. There you go. And go from the beginning?
Yep. Okay.
Thank you. It's October. So, first, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. As most of you may be aware, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Go onto the next screen. If you are a woman, you love a woman, you know a woman. Statistically, this is likely going to touch your life. Next screen. Next screen. On our common council, we have eight people. Next screen. Statistically, we also know that one in eight women get breast cancer. I'm that woman. What I want, what I'd like you to know is a few things. Women of color are 40% higher mortality rate through their diagnosis, even though statistically, there are fewer incidents compared to white women. It is not a family, it's not just a family thing. The majority of women that get breast cancer do not have a history in their family. We have tremendous programs throughout the county and throughout the state. And so, I would encourage people not to let limited means or access stop them from getting their mammograms. They are absolutely vital to what we do. We get an indication of what a healthy woman looks like. And when we say that, We get an indication of what a healthy woman looks like and when we say that course and we do it with recurrence, what we find is that we get an early diagnosis and that is the game changer in the whole conversation. I'd also like to have people rethink the odds. This is not what it was. This is no longer death sentence that it was some years ago. Women absolutely are going on, once we've had an early diagnosis, to lead long, healthy lives. So here's my ask, be there. I had the opportunity to go to retreat probably a handful of years ago. There were about two dozen women and absolutely the largest issue that came forward is that the majority of these women were abandoned. In the middle of having a cancer diagnosis, they felt like no one was there. Their partner wasn't there, friends wouldn't call them, people avoided them. And, you know, it just seems to me that if you've had, if you're dealing with something significant from a health perspective, you need your support. And so I would encourage people, it doesn't have to be a huge thing. You can just pick up a pan of brownies when you go to the grocery store, drop by and say, I was thinking of you while you're out running errands. Take a moment and say, hey, can I pick something up for you? If you're not comfortable talking, send a card. It is hard to quantify how much that one-minute effort will mean to that other person on the line. And so being there means more than you can even possibly imagine, you know? And kind of as an overreaching statement, I would say that's probably true of anyone who is suffering, you know, whether you've got a sick kid, you know, maybe you have a dog that's not feeling well, whatever's going on in your life. I think those same rules apply. And that's really what I wanted is to leave behind is women, take care of yourself and then community, just support those folks that are suffering and, you know, if nothing else, they, they appreciate knowing that you care. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, my mom is also a breast cancer survivor, so it's an important issue for me as well.
Yep.
Alright, then we move on. Oh, yeah, Dorothy.
I would like to not leave the guys out.
Yeah.
Because I don't remember who, but there was a relatively famous or well-known, at least, black fellow that was on and he said that he had breast cancer.
Yep, that was within the past.
And he was wanting it to be okay for men to make that a consideration in their life as well.
Yep.
And I think that's a very, very valid point. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Alright, then moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I know about program.
Alright, so again, is there anything that someone would like to take out of the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove item number eleven.
No, you'd like to remove item eleven, which is...
Resolution for our 179-19.
Is there a second to that? Or actually, I think we just removed it.
We don't need to vote.
No. Alright, anything besides number eleven? Alright, then, all in favor of approving the, the consent agenda besides number eleven, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Alright, so everything but eleven is approved. And so now discussing whether or not to refer out number eleven. I do have two individuals, since it was removed, that would like to speak. First, I have Rita Hendricks and after that is Jay Hockney.
Good evening. I'm Rita Bar Hendricks, a Fitchburg resident for fifteen years. I'm here this evening to ask you to return 5B11 to the Planning Department. First, I'm a strong believer in transparency and this isn't transparent. Edgewood isn't mentioned in the amendment, the location site, it doesn't tell the public where it is, and it has a part in it that says that it allows development as may be allowed. So it's like saying an absolute, here's an open pass for anything, you know, what does that mean? There hasn't been an opportunity for citizen input. The council doesn't have enough knowledge to vote on sending this to the Plan Commission. Now, I want to know when that I am an Edgewood High School graduate and an Edgewood College graduate. I love Edgewood. They get a lot of our money. But I want transparency in the process for every bit of Fitchburg, not special privileges for anyone. Please make sure that this is handled in such a way that ensures citizen input is transparent and is the best way to handle this without opening Pandora's box. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on this matter. My name's Jay Hockney. As you all know, I've been following this comp plan update very carefully. I have a lot of interest in it and I think I have some expertise regarding topics and matters of this nature. Tonight, I would like to just share some thoughts on our 179-19. I, I agree based upon what's transpired in the past three or four meetings of this body and the Plan Commission that, and earlier meetings where people from Edgewood and the owner of the property appeared, that something needs to be done about this and I fully support a process, an orderly process that would do that. I'm going to keep these remarks fairly brief, but I do want to refer to a redlined version, underlining, cross-out version of the resolution that I think addresses the issues that have been brought up, provides for an orderly process to allow the public to comment on proposals of this kind. This is a major amendment. To put this forty acres into, inside the urban service area boundary, that's a major amendment to the comp plan. And the current comp plan does not have a definition of what a major amendment is and it should, and there's an opportunity to do that. And once the comp plan's adopted, then people can come forward with major amendments and the comp plan may be allow that only once in ten years, it may allow it twice, may allow it three times. That's another issue for the comp plan to decide. This resolution as currently drafted is far too broad. It, it authorizes things that shouldn't be authorized at this stage in the process and there are other vehicles available for addressing the Edgewood issue. And I fully agree that those people should have an opportunity to present their case on whether this athletic complex should be built on that forty acres. I don't think it should be done within the context of the timeline for the current comp plan, but there is a way to, to address the issues that are associated with the Edgewood proposal. And the additions and deletions that I'm offering to this amendment and to this resolution would allow for an orderly process to do that. And I hope that this is either sent back to the Planning Department for further review to see what kind of language changes might be appropriate given this, these comments or in the ult, okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Jay. Alright, so I can just speak to what this is a little bit and we can't really discuss the item, it's really if we're going to refer out or not. But I know that a couple of weeks ago, or maybe it's four weeks ago now, the council had asked to have some more firm direction that we could give on these items for the comp plan and it has to go to the Plan Commission first. And so I'll speak, you know, exactly to the details in there next week and they can provide edits if they want to. And then in two weeks, they'll come here back and with any comments from Plan Commission and we can also write feedback and changes if they want to make any amendments to it at that point in time. But to not send it this week means that it won't go to Plan Commission until November, which is a little late in the game probably. So that's why it's being referred out because it was requested to and the, what's in there is what I have directed staff in my recommendation as well.
And if I could just, sorry. If I could just note that it was unanimous vote by this body to send this, recommended for staff to put this on the agenda to send to Plan Commission, so I'm kind of concerned why it was pulled off the consent agenda.
You know, I think...
Janelle?
From my perspective, I think that our intention was to find a path for this and give Edgewood the opportunity to, to be considered and try to, try to satisfy both of those requirements. Having said that, as I take a look at the details, I think that there were two things that stood out to me. The first thing is that within our language, we do, we do not articulate who the entity is that's part of this process. And so if I take a look back two years ago today, this is exactly what happened with North Stoner Prairie. We didn't communicate who the entity was. We had this high-level language and so any interest that there would have been from the public to participate in the process, we really haven't provided them that vehicle. I think there was some other languages, I looked at this, that, that felt like if our intention is to go ahead and provide some direction to the committees that would review this, there, and for discussion's sake, let's assume that that's an executive level that says that we're interested in exploring this, there are some language in here that feels pretty broad in how we would pursue that. And so I think those were the two things that concerned me as I looked at it.
Here, if I may. Yeah, the, the purpose of the comp plan is not to address individual projects, but development of land parcels in general as is best practice for the city to grow. That's why those statements were vague in there for development. You know, we're looking at the option of developing this parcel, it doesn't have to be Edgewood, it could be anything if this body wishes to move forward, but to specifically identify any parcel for a particular development is not good planning practice.
Alright, Julia.
But I also want to mention in the resolution, it mentioned that this, the name of Edgewood College, so I don't know why you're, yeah, potentially, yeah, it said that, so I don't know why you say that it's vague and we don't know.
We can't go back and forth.
I know, no, but I am, I want to clarify this, you know what I mean?
Thank you.
It's there.
I have Dorothy next.
Yeah, I was just going to read it. It says, whereas Edgewood College has proposed development of a forty-acre parcel for a potential athletic complex located in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section Seventeen, west of Seminole Highway and south of Lacy Road, which is the subject parcel, which parcel is not currently within the urban service area or a few, future urban development area in which the Common Council wishes to review further. I would say that's fairly clear that that's what we want to consider.
Janelle, do you want to speak?
One of the pledges that I made to my neighbors is that as we were putting these agenda items together, then they were going to review the content that came out, that we would be upfront and clear about those things, you know, so that if you are a citizen of the city, you don't have to go in and look at every item in line item detail to find out if in fact that is something that you were interested in.
Any other comments on whether or not to refer this? Seeing none, all in favor referring out number eleven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to refer out number eleven, say nay.
Nay.
Alright, and that by my estimation passes and we can move on to Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Several items here to report tonight. We have a lot going on in the community, the first of which you heard a little bit about through Alder Crowsey's question. That's the Dane County Housing Summit is Thursday, October tenth. That be a known terrace, the city will be well represented by several individuals from SITA and staff. Secondly is the Phoenix Grand Opening. This is for their manufacturing facility off Lacy Road in Uptown. That'll be Friday, October eleventh. The grand opening event will run from two PM to five PM with speakers beginning at two fifteen, a three fifteen ribbon cutting and then a social period proceeding, I mean, following the ribbon cutting. Next, the Dane County Executive Budget was announced Wednesday, October twenty-third at four PM. There will be a, an announcement of some projects that were funded in Fitchburg by the county. One of them is the Signal at MM&amp;McCoy. The other would be the Signal at Lacy and MM. And a third would be their participation in the Fish Hatchery Road Project. Next, we have Dave's Guitar Shop, ribbon cutting and one-year anniversary. That's on October twenty-third at Cahill Main and that's a Wednesday, starts at four PM. Ribbon cutting will be at four thirty. The Business Appreciation Lunch will be Tuesday, October twenty-ninth at eleven thirty AM and that's going to be at the Benjamin Investment Building located on Verona Road and McKee or Highway PD. That's the three-story building, that'll be on the third floor there. Updates, opportunities for the public input to the comprehensive plan. There are four on the schedule, the first of which is October tenth. I'm sorry, the mayor's going to address these, I'm not going to do them twice here. So I'm going to go on to the next one here. And that's the Fall Electronics Recycling and Shredding and Med Drop. That's going to be Saturday, November second from eight to eleven, right out here on the circle of the city campus. And lastly, there's going to be a CPR class that's going to be taught in Spanish. That's Fitchroona EMS Paramedics will lead a CPR class in Spanish at the Fitchburg Library on Tuesday, November fifth at six thirty PM. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alright, then moving along to Plan Commission. Tom, do you want to do this one?
I have a point of order.
Yeah.
It has to do with Greg, our financial advisor, reference to the direct referrals from Ellers. Could we move him up so he can leave?
Absolutely, I was actually going to ask when you're reading this one, Tom, if anyone's here for other things, but I would absolutely love to move those things up. So let me go to New Business B, direct referrals, and if you, as finance committee, want to start with eleven B one, that'd be great.
Actually, I was going to have Greg come up and just do a short presentation, short. He gave it to us in finance and I think I'll just have him, if it's alright with him, I'm sure it is, just to go over them briefly like you did in finance, Greg.
I'd be happy to. Good evening. I think included with the resolutions was our pre-sale report that kind of summarized the purpose of this bond issue. So I'm going to walk through portions of that pre-sale report just to kind of give you an overview of the purpose of this particular bond issue. If you have our pre-sale report in your packets, there are page numbers, I'm going to start on page seven of the pre-sale report. It says estimated financing plan at the top. It identifies the projects that are being included within this particular financing. These bonds are financing all-new capital investment, consists of the fire station headquarters remodeling, which is being amortized over ten years, the McKee Road, non-TID six, Phase Two design, that's also being amortized over ten years. Portion of the Fish Hatchery Road Project, about forty percent of the total project cost, a portion of that is being attributable to TID District Number Ten and a portion of that project cost is being attributed to the city overall and be repaid through the debt service, property tax levy. And then the final project is the Uptown Road Improvements, which are amortized over ten years, but the debt service for those projects will be repaid through special assessments. So we allocated all of the debt service by project, so each of the revenue sources that are repaying the debt, it's clear which amount is necessary for each project. So the fire station, McKee Road, the non-TID portion of Fish Hatchery, the debt service for all of those projects will be repaid through the property tax levy. The portion of Fish Hatchery Road that's attributable to TID District Number Ten will be repaid from revenues from TID District Number Ten. And then the debt service for the Uptown Road Project, that will be repaid through special assessments levied against benefiting properties. Next, I'll direct your attention to page nine of the pre-sale report, which is the tax impact analysis. This really provides the overview of how these bonds impact your levy for debt service. On the far left-hand side of that spreadsheet is the summary of all of the city's existing general obligation debt. The city budgets several non-levy revenue sources to repay a portion of that debt service, most notably some revenues from active TIP districts. So your levy in the two thousand nineteen budget for debt service was approximately three... So your levy in the 2019 budget for debt service was approximately $3,876,000. Under the proposed debt issues, we show the estimated debt service on the bonds that are being considered this evening, principal amount of $9,620,000, and the estimated interest cost of about $2,163,000. And then we show the non-levy revenue sources that are anticipated to help pay a portion of the debt service, the assessments I mentioned from the Uptown Road project, and then TID 10 revenues to cover the portion of Fish Hatchery Road that is being attributable to TID District 10. So under the column levy and tax rate, again, your levy for debt service in 2019 was approximately We're estimating that levy, including this bond issue, your debt service levy would increase approximately $96,200 in 2020. When we updated the city's long-term financial management plan and presented that back in June, which really looked at your capital projects over the next eight to 10 years, we were estimating that the debt service levy would likely for the next several years increase by about $100,000 per year. So this $96,000 increase in the levy in 2020 is really right in line with those long-range estimates that we have prepared for your full capital projects. The other item we always look at is your borrowing limit. That's summarized on page 10. At the beginning of this fiscal year, the city had utilized about 32% of your general obligation debt limit. That's the maximum amount of principal you can have outstanding. With this bond issue you're considering this evening, at the end of 2019, you'd be at about 28% of your debt limit, which is, you know, well under your policy thresholds and targets that you have, and so you're in line with those goals that we have presented in the financial management plan. Finally, I just want to talk about the TID 10 portion of this financing plan, particularly the Fish Hatchery Road projects. On page 11 of the pre-sale report, this kind of starts the analysis on TID District Number 10. So far, this district has had about 1.4 million of increment value generated. It's a relatively new TIP district, was just created a few years ago. Based on estimates of value that is presently under construction this year in 2019, we're estimating there's about $31 million of new increment value under construction within TID District 10 this year. So if that increment value is projected out over the remaining life of the district, that's summarized on page 12, over the full 27-year life of TID 10, that would generate about 19.9 million of increment, tax increment to TID District 10. That's the revenue stream that's available to help pay for TID 10 expenses, including the Fish Hatchery Road or a portion of the Fish Hatchery Road project. So the last page in the pre-sale report kind of provides the cash flow projection for TID 10 to look at the reasonableness that this district could cover its share of the Fish Hatchery Road project. So the main revenue stream, again, to the district is the tax increment revenue. We're only projecting what's been constructed and what's estimated to be constructed this year, and then we're inflating that by about 1.5% per year. So there's still lots of opportunities for additional development within TID 10, but we're trying to be conservative and only account for what's kind of known or in progress at this time. The only other major expense that's presently outstanding for TID 10 is a development incentive to Plesco for their project. That's paid out from increment that's generated exclusively from their project, subject to a development agreement. We've estimated those payments here in the cash flow analysis. And then we show the portion of this borrowing that's attributable to TID 10, about $4,260,000 in principal plus interest. So under the balances column, off to the far right-hand side, the cumulative balance column, as is typical when a district is initially created, there's a deficit. Increment isn't collected at the first point until two years after a district is created. Here, that's been delayed a few more years. So there's been funds advanced to cover costs, and then those costs can be reimbursed as increment is generated. So we're projecting that construction that's underway presently within TID 10 this year will generate sufficient revenue to cover the 4.26 million of debt that's just being assigned to TID 10 for the Fish Hatchery Road project. That cumulative balance that grows over time, that's money that's going to be available to potentially pay for other phases of Fish Hatchery Road that are maybe financed at a later date, as well as other eligible expenses within TID 10. But anytime before the city considers borrowing funds for a TIP district, we always like to look at it kind of with a fresh perspective to make sure that it's reasonable to assume that the increment can cover the debt service. So that's the purpose of this analysis. So the items that are on your agenda this evening, there's a series of resolutions. State statutes require that when you do a bond issue, you identify how much of the bonds are being allocated for particular types of projects. So it's one bond issue, $9,620,000. $405,000 of that amount is going towards fire station improvements, and then $9,215,000 is going for street improvements. That's the combined total of Fish Hatchery Road, the TID and non-TID portions, Uptown Road, and McKee Road improvement. So there's separate resolutions for those project amounts, and then a kind of a roll-up resolution that encompasses the full bond issue. So we're at the beginning stages of the debt issuance process. This is step one. If you authorize us to proceed this evening, we'll proceed with going into market. The city will have a rating call with Moody's Investor Services, and we're anticipating the bonds will be sold on November 12th, the date of a regular common council meeting. The sale will be conducted that morning, and we'll present the results to you that evening for award. If accepted by the common council on that date, the closing and wiring of funds to the city will occur on December 4th. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the financing plan.
Dorothy.
Any sense of what the market will be at that point in time, whether interest rates will be up or down, favorable to us or not?
We have factored in upward movement in interest rates, as we typically do when we're at this initial stage. That doesn't mean interest rates will necessarily go up, but the rates that we've used in this analysis built in an extra 25 basis points, or 0.25% into the rates. So rates have still remained favorable. I know there's been lots of discussion about future actions that the Fed may take. I think those typically are built into the bond market kind of in advance, because typically it's reasonably anticipated in terms of what those actions are going to be. So we've accounted for some upward movement in rates, but rates still remain very favorable.
Thank you.
Julia.
Yeah, this question is for Misty. I know that there is $9.9 million for the strip improvement to cover part of the Fish Hatchery and part for McKee, so we are assuming that next year we are going to issue more bonds too, to pay the rest?
Absolutely. We issue bonds basically every year.
Yeah.
So included in here is about 40% of Fish Hatchery Road.
Okay.
I don't want to borrow all of it right now, because there's still some uncertainty with there.
Okay.
And as we know, Fish Hatchery Road's going to go over a two-year period now.
Yeah.
So around 40% of that.
Okay.
This is actually our third time borrowing for McKee Phase 2, because this is also a really long project. And then the Uptown Roads, we're working on doing those now.
What is Uptown where?
So it's the Central Park Place.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Ooh, Cheryl, Green Market.
Yeah, it's Green Market, Central Park Place, where the railroad crosses by the new Veridian Development. That would be, well, it's Central Park Place as it runs into Nine Bark at Sine. And then the other project developments are for future economic development opportunities in Uptown.
Yep. And so those are the projects that are being assessed back to the benefiting property owners. But in the short term, we need to pay the money to actually put those roads in. So we're borrowing for that upfront, and then we'll get paid back through the special assessment process.
Okay. And I have a question on page, can I ask Mayor another question? On page 11 of your presentation, there is tax increment on District Number 10, development assumption, and there is in 2019, a $31 million project value on the construction. That project is the Plesco project?
There's a variety of projects included in there.
Okay, what are those?
The Jimmy John's Building at the north side of Fish was a partial, so there's some additional value there.
Okay.
The UW Credit Union Building.
Yeah.
Plesco.
And that's it.
I think it might be those three.
Yeah, okay.
Any further questions at all?
So can I ask another question? So my question for Eller is, so you think that this TID Number 10, it will be able to absorb, the increment, it will be able to pay for, you know, the debt?
As far as where we're standing right now in terms of the, you know, the portion of the project of Fish Hatchery that's attributable to TID 10, you know, with this $31 million of estimated increment value under construction now, yes, that's covering the debt that's outstanding. And as future phases are looked at being constructed, we'll evaluate it again to make sure if there are the future phases that are assigned to TID 10, the increment sufficient to cover it.
So I want to ask a question because I want to clarify. So when you say that in this analysis, is included the total value of the cost of the Fish Hatchery, or is only the first phase?
It's just the phase. It's, as Misty mentioned, you know, 40% of the project cost is being funded now, so the portion of that that's assigned to TID 10, that's the only part we've built into this analysis.
Okay.
But when you look at the cash flow on page 13, under the cumulative balance column, you know, you show that that balance is starting to grow over time. That's revenue that's going to be building up within the district that could help pay for other future project costs in TID 10, including some future phases of Fish Hatchery. But we would look at that kind of independently when we know the amount that you're borrowing for those subsequent phases. You know, likely at that time, we would have more updated data in terms of the increment value. So we'd look at it independently each time before you authorize each phase.
I want to really show. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions at all?
And then Tracy is prepared to do roll call votes for these, please.
Yeah, yep. So if we don't see anything else, Tom, if you want to do a motion on the first resolution, B1, that'd be great.
I'm under direct referrals, number one. I believe Greg just went over all three of the, all four of these, whatever. The first one was resolution, it's our 171-19, initial resolution authorizing 405,000 general obligation bonds for fire station project, and I'll move that first.
All right, same by Julia, and did finance approve?
Finance approved it.
All right, any further discussion at all? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alder Radifrata?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
Aye.
Alder Rice?
Aye.
Alder Schroder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, fantastic. Number two, Tom.
The next one is number two. It's resolution R.172-19, initial resolution authorizing $9,215,000 general obligation bond for a street improvement project. I'll move it or somebody.
Julia, any further questions on this one?
This one, finance approved.
Finance approved as well, good. All right, roll call.
Alder Radifrata?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
Aye.
Alder Rice?
Aye.
Alder Schroder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Fantastic. All right, number three, Tom.
Number three is resolution R.173-19, resolution directing application of notice to elector relating to bond issues. I'll move it.
Second.
All right, same then.
Second, finance approved.
Approved it, all right. Further questions? All right, roll call, please.
Alder Radifrata?
Aye.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
Aye.
Alder Rice?
Aye.
Alder Schroder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, last one.
The last one is resolution R.174-19, resolution providing for the sale of $9,620,000 obligation, general obligation corporation purpose bonds, Series 2019 A. Adam. I'll move it.
Second.
All right, same by Janelle, did finance approve that?
Finance approved.
Good. Any further questions? All right, roll call on this one, please.
Alder Radifrata?
Aye.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
Aye.
Alder Rice?
Aye.
Alder Schroder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Have a good day. All right, then with those, we can go all the way back up to Plan Commission. Tom, you're still on the block here.
This is Plan Commission, obviously our last meeting, but this is Plan Commission Resolution R.169-19, CS 2312-19, a resolution approving request by Michael Marty, agent for Green Tech Land Company LLC, for approval of a certified survey map to replace and delete outlet four, five, and six of Nine Springs and outlet 14 of Uptown crossing to the public, let me go back, crossing to the public for park, open space, and stormwater. And that was the purpose of it. Plan approved.
Can you make a motion quick?
I think Parks did. Parks?
Sarah, you want to move to approve?
Yeah, I can, Parks approved, and I can make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, anything further you want to talk about, Tom or Sarah? I can describe it too. It's just, it's some of the parkland in the Nine Springs area. It actually is next to some wetlands as well, and so it might look a little bit funny on some of the maps, but it's providing some access to East Cheryl and also around, there's some, for some walking paths and stuff like that. So it's a nice chunk of land in the middle of that to be available for the neighborhood. Any questions at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right, that is approved. Public Works, Anne, you want to do this?
I move to approve resolution R.165-19, amending the 2019 general fund budget for traffic slash speed counters. Second.
All right, same then. And did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
Did finance approve?
Approved.
Yes.
All right, do you want to speak to it? Do you want me to speak to it?
Well, the Public Works Department needs a couple of extra traffic data collectors, and because we went for several months without a director of Public Works, there was some extra money in the budget, and rather than using money for the 2020 budget, we can get it out of the 2019 budget.
Yep, I know there's a lot of demand throughout the city for traffic counts, and so this will help to do that, and it enables us to not have to find that in the 2020 budget. So it's able, enabling us to get that a little bit earlier and with current funds. Any questions at all? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Next one, yeah?
I move to approve resolution R.167-19, approving MG&E services for 2019 Uptown improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
Did finance?
Approved.
All right, do you want to speak to this one, or you want Pat to?
Go ahead.
Yep, this is just for the lighting improvements that'll go in in conjunction with those roads we referred to earlier. Central Park Place, Green Market, in Uptown for, for future development. And those will be assessed back.
Okay, good. Any questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that one's approved. One more in.
I'll move to approve resolution R.168-19, approving Wisconsin and Southern Railroad services for 2019 Uptown improvements.
Is there a second? Same by Julia.
This is for clearing trees and installing railroad crossings and signals, and this work we're required to have done by the end of October.
All right, that's very important then. All right, did Public Works approve?
We did approve.
Okay. Yeah, Julia?
So who is paying for the city or the railroad?
Yeah, the railroad crossing is going to be paid for by the TID. The railroad crossing is 100 linear feet. That was included in the TID project plan, so that section will be paid for by the TID. It's actually going to be constructed by the railroad, because they have certain specifications, and they have the equipment, and then it'll be paid for by the TID in Uptown.
So we are paying?
The TID, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not the general fund, but the TID.
I know eventually, but we are the taxpayer paying for this. So my question is, why does the, the railroad is not paying for this?
It's, it's, the taxpayers don't pay for it. The TID pays for it. And it's the increment that's generated from the projects that are built within the TID.
Yeah, but, okay. And my question is, why the railroad is not paying for, for, for part of that? Yeah, I want to know.
Why who?
The railroad.
Because we requested the crossing, they, um, didn't want the crossing. We, we're putting it in to benefit the, uh, the response time for a fire department to Highway fourteen.
Okay. No, I didn't know that. Okay.
Dorothy?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, we're saying that the city is fronting the money to get this done and the TID will eventually pay it back.
There's actually revenue currently in the TID that will pay for.
Okay.
Increment.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Any further questions at all? All right, see none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? That one is also approved. Anything else in Public Works, Anne?
No, that's all.
All right, Parks Commission, Sarah?
Conversation about resolution R one six three nineteen. Can I have a discussion first or do I make a motion first? Okay, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve resolution R one six three nineteen Veterans Memorial Park. Acceptance of the path construction donation park, excuse me, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Same by Tom. And did Parks approve?
We did.
Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, all right, sorry, Sarah. Now you can tell us all about it. No, you're okay.
We are very thankful for the donation, um, and we're excited to see this come through. We just, we would ask that when more, um, updates occur to this park, if Parks, if the Parks Department could just kind of be included and have some insight for the details. There was just a lively discussion as to how we received a lot of citizen input throughout the years and that we'd love to be kind of a part of it, just understanding that it's, um, donation driven and are so thankful for that. But just if we could kind of be more included and have more specific plans, we would be really appreciative.
I know this resolution, uh, and I know Tom presented this with a gentleman as well. It's putting in a path up at the Gorman Wayside Park. Um, I know there's future improvements also planned, but these were all donated services, is my understanding. Uh, they are being built to city specifications though, so they're, you know, they're donating. It's not, they're donating how they wanna build it. It's making sure that those meet city specifications as well. Is there questions, comments, Tom?
You just have to be aware that, uh, first of all, um, Sarah mentioned it, but the donation is fabulous for the city because the person wants to be anonymous. They don't want any publicity. They don't want any, their name mentioned nothing. And I think the city should respect that, especially when they're able to do it for us and get it done. The second thing is, is, um, it's, it's a, uh, project in motion. Um, we don't know exactly where things are right now. I can appreciate what Parks said. But all I'm saying is, once the path is in, um, I think then it will probably gain some strength, get some interest. Um, all we're doing is putting a path up there and putting a path in so you can see where the outline, what it, what it will look like. And to be able to even put the path in, uh, we had to bring it back to this body in Parks to get an okay. So that's, that's all it was.
Excellent. Um, I guess I have a question, Tom, which is related to the product, the bigger project. If someone is interested in donating towards this project, uh, one of the pieces to it, if they contact you, staff, who would be the best person to contact?
We're almost at that point, but we're not quite there yet. And if somebody's interested, um, please get their name. And we can recontact them, but we haven't quite got over that hurdle yet to set it up. Um, but, um, that's no problem. I mean, that's where we're at.
Further questions at all? See none, all in favor, can say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, then that is approved. Anything else here on Parks you wanna talk about?
Susan Easterday, um, and otherwise, uh, had Wade come in and give us a presentation on the potential comp, uh, discussion and otherwise, nothing else.
All right, then Library Board, Anne?
Our next meeting of the Library Board will be on Wednesday, the sixteenth, at five thirty at the library. And also, the library has their twelfth annual Kids Halloween Party on the twenty-sixth from six to eight. Spectacular event.
All right, thank you. Commission, Agent Wall?
Thank you. The next meeting will be this coming Thursday, the tenth, at eight thirty in the morning. And topic will be primarily comp plan.
All right, great. RCC?
Nothing deeper, you know?
All right, Transportation and Transit, I think that's Dan, actually. I'm not aware of anything on that. Uh, Seda, Julia?
Our next meeting is October twenty-four.
All right, Agri and Rural Affairs?
Oh, and I want to invite, well, you mentioned that, invite everyone to the business luncheon on, please. Register. It's gonna be nice.
A report, we've got one coming up shortly.
All right, what about EMS?
Same thing.
All right, and that's the annual meeting. If you can make it, uh, everyone in council is invited. That's the seventeenth, so next week, Thursday, it's at the Verona Fire Station.
Correct.
Uh, what time, is it seven?
Usually seven.
Yeah, that's what I thought, seven, okay. All right, Bicycle Committee? I think that's, yeah, Julia?
Which one?
Bicycle Committee?
Oh, uh, no report. Our next meeting is next week, the fifteenth.
All right, Trade Advisory Committee?
That will also be meeting on the tenth at four o'clock here.
There's a lot of meetings coming up here. Landmarks. Shannon? All right, then moving on to State Committee's Finance Committee, Tom?
Approval of bills, we're approving some checks here and bills, obviously. The first one is check number eleven, um, ninety-six sixty-nine through eleven ninety-seven fifty. They're dated nine sixteen nineteen through nine thirty nineteen. Total is one million four hundred eight thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Any questions? On those, if not, I'll move on. The next one is reference ACH payment. These are for September twenty nineteen. The amount was four hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and ten cents. And the last one is, uh, the P car trans, um, the P cards. And they're for the cycle ending September the sixth of this year. That total was two hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents.
All right.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Personnel, Julia?
Uh, no report. Our next meeting is, uh, November fourteen.
All right, Public Safety?
Move to approve, uh, the operator license for Tyler Stoffels.
Is there a second?
I second.
Same by Sarah. Uh, do you wanna speak to it, Anne?
There were a couple of contingencies with that, but, um, barring any, anything that is not quite right, we did approve that in Public Safety.
All right, any questions at all? Um, for people who are new, uh, I know that if someone has something that doesn't automatically get them approved, then they have to come to Public Work, uh, to Public Safety. And, uh, a lot of times it's, uh, like an OWI in the past. And typically, if it's, they've only done it once and they've gone to court ordered, you know, whatever, meetings and stuff like that, and they've done what they, have said that they would do and they're supposed to do, then we usually give them a second chance.
In this case, he hasn't had his court date yet. But assuming that that goes okay, then we did approve it.
Any further questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, Mayor's Reports. Um, I'm gonna do District Reports first one because there's a lot going on and I don't wanna say any, talk about anything that someone else maybe wants to speak about. So I will start with Julia, actually. If you'd like to go first on District Reports?
Okay, so the mayoral concern in our district, I receive a lot of call and email. People are concerned about the safety in the district. Uh, you know, our names is on the news every morning. So people are, are very concerned and I think it's gonna be, um, I talked to the chief, uh, Brecklin, to see if we can do like a, a safety forum with the neighbors. So he can explain what is going on, who are the people doing all of this and how we can, as a citizen, we can help the police to, you know, to be more proactive with some of the safety issues. So, um, I think he's want to ask the rest of the Alder if they are okay with us or we can do something like, um, like a forum for the whole city instead for one district because I know that is affecting District Three, Two, and I don't know, District Four. Uh, but, uh, the latest, you know, issue happening in District Two and Three and, um, well, District One, you know.
More constant.
Uh, so, but, um, but there are, uh, there, there are this concern, you know, and people, they want to have a follow-up, what happened after, you know what I mean? So, and I think that if you are okay, uh, you know, we have a, you want to do the AME, we can coordinate and do something in November, you know? So we can, you know, so give it some, telling the city or the residents that we are, yeah, we, we are proactive. We are helping the police department to, you know, to, to be more proactive with this issue and how we can, as a citizen, we can, what are the measurements that we can take to, to be more, to tackle this safety issue, you know? We are doing that in my block, you know, try to have the light on, try to, if someone have the garage door open, we text and say, your garage door is open, you know? So try to do all of this in follow-up, there are cars in the, you know, kids, uh, or young people in cars driving slowly, you know, checking garage doors and so. But I would say that it's gonna be a good idea, we can do something, you know?
Good idea.
Okay.
Do you also wanna talk about the event at noon on Friday?
Uh, yes, and on Friday, we are, um, the Latino, this, um, uh, you know, for September fifteen to October fifteen is, uh, the Hispanic Heritage Month. And on, um, on Fri- on Friday, it's gonna be, uh, business luncheon on, uh, to celebrate, um, um, this month, um, it's in the Monona Terrace. Everyone was invited to go. It's a free event. So La Movida, uh, is a radio show, um, that they are the organizer. And usually, um, the city of Fitchburg is gonna be present. Uh, we are gonna do the proclamation in Spanish. Uh, the mayor is going, some of the, I think you're going, Pachu, and some people from the, we are, you know, this event started in Fitchburg, believe it or not, in the senior center a couple of years ago, five years ago, and it was, the senior center was too small and they, they moved to Monona. Uh, but, um, so everyone is invited, there's still time to, to, to respond to the invitation. And, um, and this is gonna be leader for the community and speaker, it's gonna be a speaker and they're gonna recognize some people in the community for the work, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anne, anything?
I just wanted to say that I have received more complaints again about the amount of furniture and other mattresses and bulk items that are left out on the street, particularly by renters in my district. It's a constant complaint.
Thank you. Dorothy?
Yeah, for all three of us, um, we had a meeting, a neighborhood meeting at, um, Stark related to McKee Road. Really, really nice meeting, um, a lot of real energized neighbors that were there. Concerned largely about, uh, tree removal and want, wanting to make sure that trees aren't removed unnecessarily. One question that they had, which I think is a real valid one for us to discuss, is, um, the truck ordinance or lack thereof that Fitchburg has. They would like to be able to better regulate trucks coming down Seminole Highway. And as far as I know, we don't have much of a truck ordinance.
Yeah, if I could just weigh in on that quickly, anytime we use any federal or state funding for roadways, we're not allowed to regulate trucks. So the only way we can regulate trucks is if it's like a developer financed road, a local road, residential road. Otherwise, any state or federal funds, you have to allow commerce.
What about Seminole Highway as a whole?
Seminole Highway is, um, uh, we've, we've always used state MPO funds for that project or in the development of that road, so, um, trucks are allowed on that. Now, if Madison hasn't, that might be different, but Fitchburg always has.
Yeah, because one of, can I, one of the neighbor mentioned that there is a sign, a truck sign there? They mentioned that there is one? I don't know, I haven't, I never, have never seen that, so this is what they.
At the top of Seminole, by the belt line, it says trucks prohibited.
Oh, okay.
Up in the Madison part.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I think the neighbors are presuming that that means. So they, they'd like that clarified in any case.
Yeah, we can, uh, put something on the website.
All right, anything else?
I think that was it, thanks.
All right, Janelle?
Going back to what Julia said, we did, uh, we did an event with two of my neighborhoods around, uh, Neighborhood Watch. And I would say that the police department did an absolutely phenomenal job. I would encourage you to work with them. They've got a great framework. There are a couple of things that I think were incredibly revealing to our neighbors about how sophisticated some of these things have become. The good news is that the mechanisms to stop or minimally curb this are the same strategies that we've known for the longest time. And being consistent about it is the key. But, uh, you know, the feedback that we got from our neighbors as part of the meeting that we had was incredibly supportive. I think it gave them peace of mind. They understood their role in being part of the solution and a few key steps that would make a huge difference in supporting, uh, how they could keep their neighborhood safe. No other information. That's it.
Thank you. Tom?
I'm happy to report, you've all probably been over there and thank God it's done. But the roundabout at Fitcherona and Nesbit Road is done. And you know what, um, the city did, I know there's landscaping that has to be done, but the large roundabout, I think, was the way to go. Think about that when you go over there. There was a lot of discussion about going smaller. And, um, Public Works, we, we went larger with that and I, I think it's a good move. The second thing is, um, I just want you to know that, um, that Iron Man was quite a success. I did talk to some people that called me and, shoot, my number's gonna be off. But it was like two hundred and fifty thousand, I wanna say, people that passed through Fitchburg or they had a number on it in reference to Iron Man. But remember, that brings food, gas, housing, um, hotels. I know it's an inconvenience for some people, uh, for that day, but, um, it does put Fitchburg on the map. I know for a fact there are people over the country, not state, the country, that came to Fitchburg to ride that through our city. Herman Fund died. He was a starter. Everyone sitting up here, I'm sure, doesn't know him. But he started the Fitchburg Fire Department. You might know about the green trucks. Our fire trucks were green. That was him. And then he moved to New Glarus. He was buried in New Glarus and, um, I was at the funeral. Actually, uh, Fitchburg was well represented too. There were a number of people from Fitchburg there. And the chief was there, the fire chief for Fitchburg was there. So I don't know if any of us here will make it, but he was ninety-nine. The last thing, um, don't fill up your, you've probably seen some signs around. Don't fill up your trunk, but, um, if you go to the Old Bank for the Great Pumpkin giveaway, they do give away pumpkins and it's, it's not to see how many you can get in your trunk. But, um, that's coming up this, it's on Saturday. There's some signs around the city you might see, you might have seen. That's it. Nope, that's it.
All right, are you? Shannon, anything? All right, Sarah?
Only thing I had is, um, Chief Paul Vermaeker was kind enough to take me on a tour of the firehouses. Um, it was really interesting to see the different buildings and kind of, um, the similarities and differences of the houses and how they're being used. And like he already mentioned, and you already mentioned, they're open house this weekend. I don't have anything else.
All right, great. All right, you guys got a lot of stuff I wanna talk about. That's good. A few other things I wanted to mention. One is what I'm hoping is the first annual mayoral awards. I've mentioned it. We finalized the details in the last couple of weeks. That's next Wednesday. If you can make it at five o'clock, Publix invited, grab some cake and recognize, uh, residents, business and actually a staff person, and that's actually announced. So the staff person and all three of them are people, especially I thought for this first one, should be people who have made huge impacts in Pittsburgh, not even just over the last year. The staff person is Mike Zimmerman, who's been here for a long time and has really, um, been instrumental in a lot of the growth here in Pittsburgh. The business is Pro-Mega, who you're all very familiar with, and not only has a lot of jobs here and a lot of buildings here, but they also do a ton for this community with, through a lot of different events. And then the resident, uh, citizen one is Jeanie Seeling, who was our second mayor ever. One of the first female mayors in the state, I believe, instrumental in creating the senior center and getting the library built, a bunch of other projects, and so someone who has been hugely influential as well for that, so, uh, if you can make that, that'd be great, anyone's welcome, it's over in the senior center and, uh, we'll be doing that next Wednesday. Next thing I want to mention is there is a group coming from essentially the White House, not Donald Trump, he's not gonna be here, but a bunch of people for, um, coming not just to Pittsburgh, but to the area, and they're looking at some of the economic zones that are, um, and I'm blanking on the actual areas of them, what are those called?
Enter- enterprise, um, they're, uh, basically enterprise zones for, for tax incentives.
Yeah, so like North Fitch Hatcher Road, for example, is in, is one of these, uh, zones. Masson, yeah, opportunity zone, thank you. Yep, um, there's some areas over by Ella Drive that's an opportunity zone, Masson has a lot of them as well, but we're gonna be meeting with people both Sunday night for a while and then Monday, most of the day. We're driving through the, the whole area, but including parts of the city, so, um, more to come on that, but I'm gonna be there, I know Joyce is, I think you're gonna be there a little bit as well, Pat, good. So, um, more to come on that, I'll report back on, you know, what we learned, but good opportunity to kind of show what we have and where we could use more federal dollars and really make a huge impact in some areas that could use it in our city. One thing I did want to mention, uh, next Tuesday morning, if you can make it, about three times a year, there's a great group of faith leaders that meet in the community and they get together and talk about various things. Everyone is welcome, I don't know if you've gotten those emails, hopefully you have, but, uh, that's coming up next Tuesday. And last week, Wednesday, some of you were at the Open Road Celebration for Verona Road, um, in November. Verona Road essentially be done, obviously we set up McKee Road next year, but that's a huge step forward. The roundabout that Tom mentioned, I drove through a couple of times, I think I did three or four loops the first time through, I'm just kidding, not quite.
Round and round and round.
So that was great. And then the last thing, just a reminder that, you know, we had the, um, the public hearing on the budget, but amendments are due on Thursday, so I know Misty would want me to remind you of that, if you have any amendments, and that's all I have, Dorothy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I should have remembered the Verona Road one. That was a big one. I wanted to mention with the, um, Oak Bank Pumpkin Giveaway, there's also, uh, um, fundraiser associated with that for Safe Harbor, and let me read this quick. Safe Harbor reduces trauma and promotes healing for children and adults with intellectual disabilities who are victims of or witnesses to crime. For more information, uh, it's, uh, safeharborhelpskids.org. So bring a little bit to drop in the bucket for them.
All right, thank you. All right, so that is all the reports, back to unfinished business, or onto unfinished business.
The Terravessa groundbreaking?
Uh, I think Pat did, but yeah, Terravessa is, um...
It's next week, isn't it? Because they changed it.
Thursday.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, this Friday is Phoenix, next Thursday, Thursday is Terravessa. Yep, absolutely. Uh, so, you know, a few updates on comp plan, I know that Sonia sent everyone the memo that is up here on the screen right now, and so you have that, just kind of, uh, update on where we're at so far and all the different pieces to the comp plan update. This will be put, if it's not on the website already, it will be on the website as well. Just wanted to go through and kind of have one, one spot where you can kind of get an update on where we're at, we're at so far and all the things that we've done so far. Along with that, as all of you know, we've talked a little bit about, we do have the five neighborhood listening sessions coming up. The first one is October tenth, this Thursday, and that is at Aldo Leo Pilt School at six-thirty. Anyone's welcome to go, I mean, it's kind of divided up by region, but anyone can go to any one. The one, uh, this Thursday has people there in Spanish, translating in Spanish, so we do have those services avail- available as well. Uh, next ones, uh, there's two on the sixteenth, both here, actually in this room, one at five, one at six-thirty. And then October twenty-first is one over at Redeemer City Church off of King James Way at six-thirty, and then the twenty-fourth at six-thirty back here as well. So you can go to as many as you want, you go to one, you go to five, um, but if you can make those, especially the ones that are kind of targeting your area, that would be great.
Did we receive an email with that information this afternoon?
You did.
No, I don't have it. Can you forward?
I will forward it to you.
Yeah, I don't have, for some reason, I don't.
And it's all on the website as well, if you want to look on there. Other than that, you know, we, obviously we referred out the other item earlier today. There's over two hundred people that have filled out the online survey so far, so we're getting some good feedback. That's just over a week that that's been available as well, so there are people who are filling that out, which is fantastic, and, uh, that's kind of what I have on comp plan for now. But more to come, and our next meeting we'll have more about that as well. Janelle, do you have a question?
Yeah, I want to go back to C one and two, did we cover what we needed to with those two points? Under Public Safety and Human Services, I think we had two points for Hy-Vee and then another one for Liquor Town, and I just wasn't certain if we needed anything done, um, beyond having that in our agenda.
Consent agenda, ah, consent agenda.
Yeah, that was a...
That was approved on consent agenda.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all.
All right, Tom?
Actually for staff, and without discussing it right now or anything, but it, it has to do with, uh, this comp plan, and if I'm understanding this right, there are thirteen chapters and it's gonna go down to roughly four. I think it's most important that the public sees that, I'd like to see those, I'd like to see what was taken out and when is that gonna be available, do we know? That's all.
Nothing's gonna be really taken out, sorry. It's gonna be just reorganized a little bit, um, I think the, where the biggest reduction is, is right now, all, like, for something like the bike and pedestrian plan, that's actually in the comp plan, which adds fifty pages to the comp plan, and instead of putting all that in there, it's going to just say, this, here's, this plan is over here, go here to look at that more in depth versus duplicating that in this document as well.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify that some more, because my understanding is there was gonna be, there's thirteen chapters and it was gonna come down roughly to four, and if you do that, you're taking quite a few pages out, and I'm not gonna get into it now, let's not get into it, but all I'm saying is you're taking quite a few pages out. I think it's very important that that plan had thirteen chapters and a hundred and some, I'm making this up, a hundred and seventy-five pages, and if we go down to seventy, that's huge. That's huge, that's, that's, I, that's not telling the public to go over here or over to B two instead of page three. I want to know what you took out, I mean, in the future, not now, we don't have to do it now, but I think, um, these pages that are going out or possibly going out, and that should be out soon, due to the fact that the public should see that before they go to some of these meetings.
Well, so again, nothing's being taken out, there's a lot of duplicate pages, but I know that, I believe the plan is to also have kind of a guide where if you're looking for a second, specific section that was in the previous comp plan, it'll tell you, oh, that section is now here on the new plan, so you can, it can maybe help you find something if you knew where it was before.
It's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's a lot of redundancy in there when you look at neighborhood plans and, uh, as the mayor mentioned, bike and ped plans and, and other documents. So instead of keeping all those plans in that document, the comprehensive plan will reference those plans which are on file.
Okay, well, okay, you can answer it this way, Pat. When the changes are made, will that be redlined or somewhere so that we can see that or the public sees it, that's all I'm trying to say.
Yeah, this, this body will see plenty of drafts along the way, that's, yeah, it's, nothing's gonna be omitted from the document, it's, it's just gonna be streamlined and reference, uh, documents that were approved prior.
Uh, Julia, and then Dorothy?
Yeah, my question is regarding all these, um, plans that we, you know, we have the housing plan, the bike pla- bike pla- plan, and, um, we have the Forward Fitcher Plan. So we're gonna have an appendix at the end and we're gonna have all of them there? Or, or they're gonna be, you know, I want to...
It'll tell people where to find those, they'll be all, all of them are online right now, and so there'll be a spot so you can, if you are interested in those, um, there might even be a live link in the PDF, I don't know how they're gonna do that, but it will tell you where that's available. It'll be, all of those things are available online.
No, I know, but I, I, I thought that the idea was to, you know, have like an appendix with all of those plans at the end of the comprehensive plan, I don't know, I would...
Yeah, it'll, it'll make more sense when you see the draft and then, then staff and the work group can explain it.
Dorothy, question?
It was gonna be the same question.
All right, anything else? All right.
So, another question.
Yeah.
So for those meeting, you know, that they are gonna have in each of our district, so, uh, can we see, uh, there's gonna be like an agenda or something, can we see it before the meeting, the alder at least, to see, you know, to have an idea where it's gonna be discussed in those meeting? Can we have that?
Absolutely, yeah, we can probably even tomorrow send that out, I know that...
We'll probably even have the agendas on the website prior to those meetings so that the public can see it too.
And I know, like, the one that's kind of, there's, for, they'll all have the same basic questions, but some of them might have an extra one or two, for example, the one that's kind of targeting the rural parts of Pittsburgh will ask about farmland and future uses for farmland, so, you know, something like that. So there's some that are targeting specific, they're, all of them will have the same five, I think, questions, and then there might be one or two that, um, targets specific areas as well. And then I think Sonia can probably send that out.
Yeah, Sonia can send that out. The meeting that's on Thursday, um, um, also targets our Healthy Neighborhood Initiatives on North Fitch Hatcher Road, so there's more questions in regards to job opportunities and housing, things like that in that area. So it's sort of, as the mayor mentioned, there's a template of five or six questions, but then each area gets into their own specificity.
And Julie, do you have a further question?
Yeah, I, I, I have a question regarding the meeting, so, uh, the structure, so I imagine that Sonia Wade, they are gonna do like an intro, you know, to the public first?
The mayor will.
Yeah, well, it's myself, and then there's two I can't make, and they, I know they've asked some alders or someone else to speak, so there's the introduction, uh, it sounds like they have a video that they're gonna play on development in Pittsburgh for that. Vanderwall will be there and they're gonna do some keypad polling of people who are in tenants as well to get some feedback from people, and then, um, it's kind of a feedback sessions and there'll be some, like, uh, individual worksheet probably, and then some small group discussions, uh, getting more feedback, I believe they're also gonna have a map of the city as well, uh, so people can provide feedback on specific areas that they might have concerns on.
Another question, what is gonna be our role as an alder?
To be there, to answer questions, provide feedback.
Okay, so where am I gonna be able to speak?
I don't know that piece for sure.
No, if people ask a question, can we answer, because we know the difference more than...
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Dorothy?
It, this will be livestreamed, all of them, by Fact TV, yes?
Yeah, they are.
And will any, um, forums or whatever that we're going to have there be available online for people to kind of follow along, um, and provide feedback online?
Yeah, the, as the mayor mentioned, there'll be the agenda with the outline of the meeting online. They're welcome to, uh, provide feedback on that, they're also welcome to, um, you know, ask questions of any staff they may have, so, uh, it's about as good a transparency as we can do in this process.
And given that we have Fact TV, we are immensely more transparent than most municipalities.
All right, anything further? Then we can go to new business, we have, uh, ordinance on here. If someone would like to make a motion, I can just kind of briefly tell you what it is once someone makes a motion, anyone want to volunteer for that?
Two, uh, zero, one, nine, dash, O, dash, two, seven. Updating the terms of common council members of citizens, commissions, committees and boards.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Second by Dorothy. And so, and when we made the change to the older terms and staggered them, we, at that point in time, we had said for the council president, that's now gonna be an annual election, but one of the things that we missed at that point updating that we should also update is the, the terms of appointments to the council to all of our different commissions and committees. Uh, right now, you know, traditionally that'd been two years because that's when everyone was getting voted for. Now, uh, it's just saying that we need to confirm that every year. I can't speak for other mayors, I would imagine that there's not gonna be a ton of changes, but maybe there are, and maybe there's committees that are better, you know, turn out to not be a good fit, or there's one or two new people, and I'm, I'm gonna imagine there's probably some, but because there is elections every year, we should really confirm all those appointments every year now for us.
I have a question about this, because what happened with the alder that they are elected for two year, they are serving in commission for two years? So that doesn't mean that also those alder are gonna be appointed every year too?
Yep, yeah, yep, 'cause they're, 'cause going forward, every alder will be elected for two years.
Yeah, I know.
But, you know, if you say it's only for two years, then for whoever is, gets elected on that off-year, that, it's a little bit weird because they're, it's like in between the...
Yeah, it'll, it'll actually be no different than the, um, council president, which is elected, you know, every two years now, it just doesn't change. So every, every position will be, have the possibility to change every year, it'll be up to the mayor.
But, yeah, I understand the part, but the question is...
President of the...
And the president of the council.
Yeah, my, my question is more, more like, how do we, we want some time continuity in some of this commission, because this is what, you know, as, as an alder, sometimes your first year, you are learning about the commission and your second term, sometimes, your second year is you feel more, like you know what you're doing and, and then if, every year we are gonna be, you know, I mean, I hope not, but, but...
Hopefully there's not big changes, I would hope that there's some...
But you know what I mean, like, um, why the, an alder that, you know, like, if I am, my term is gonna expire in twenty-twenty-one, one, I need to, in the commission that I am now, I need to, yeah, sign next year, you know what I mean? I understand, but I, you know...
You still have that issue for the four people who aren't on the two-year schedule. They would be, they'd come in and they get appointed and it's just for a year, and then it could be changed for only half of their next term, and who knows?
No, they're, they're gonna be appointed every, for two, I don't know.
No.
And, and I would like to note that this wasn't the mayor that proposed this change, it was the city attorney.
Yeah, I know.
And it was to clean up the ordinance to make it, uh, consistent.
No, I understand, but I was asking, you know, I am asking question, you know, like about...
Tom?
I guess I just have a question on that. We'll make it up, let's say, um, Sarah's on Parks for two years and she's not elected, she doesn't have to run, she's, so, her term is not coming up, but she's on for two years now because she just got elected to Parks. And why wouldn't she serve out Parks for that two years? And then my point is, the alders that are there, why don't they serve out their term? And then somebody else gets elected, that's fine, no problem, but let's say, I'm making up here, I'm making this up, but if Sarah's on Parks for two years and she just got appointed to Parks and she doesn't have to run in April, why isn't she left on Parks? I'm not quite understanding that. She's already been appointed, she's on the board, and why are, why is the city attorney, uh, jungling all this up without asking us or input here?
It's, it's the mayor's prerogative and they could very well leave Sarah on Parks for the extra year, but let's say someone new gets elected and whoever they was in that position before, they're, maybe they're the only new person, the person before was on Public Works, and the new person comes in and they, you know, maybe like Janelle, they have conflicts to be on Public Works, so they can't just go into that slot. they have conflicts to be on Public Works, so they can't just go into that slot, and by what you're saying is they couldn't then get switched out with anyone else, 'cause those people have been assigned for two years, so do you just have that person not sit on a committee, do you have someone else that, that has to go to an extra committee, and so it, I don't see a lot of changes there?
I guess I'm trying to say, let the person finish out their two years on that committee, they can't make it, if they say, hey, I have a conflict, then you change them, I understand that, I do, but why are we changing people around, that doesn't make sense to me, so if you're appointed, it, I don't like it, I just, I'll, I don't like it, I think you should leave the, now, if the alder can't, doesn't like it or has a conflict, that's a different story, I understand that, but why are we upsetting the apple cart here with this?
Could I make a recommendation that this body table this, and we'll have Valerie come explain it at the next meeting?
That's fine with me, no, no problem, this one.
Shouldn't be that complex, okay, well, all right, someone wants to postpone till, for two weeks?
Recommendation, so...
Yeah, I understand.
Take a motion by this body.
Someone wanna post a motion to postpone for two weeks?
I'll motion to postpone for two weeks.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor of postponing two weeks, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? All right, the ayes have it, sorry, all right, I guess we'll talk about it again in two weeks, then next common council meeting is in two weeks, committee hold is also just over two weeks, and at that meeting, we'll be discussing any amendments to the budget, that's the only thing we'll be discussing, that's really your chance to ask questions and discuss, because we then at the first meeting in November would vote, but you, for each amendment, you only have two chances to speak, so you can't speak three, four, or five times on the same item, you can speak twice, and then you're cut off, but that's for each amendment, so it's not just twice for the whole night. All right, move, anyone wanna move to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? All right, we are adjourned.